All right, ZBA members. I make a motion that the ZBA adopt the wording of the town administrator Brian Domina in a March 9, 2021 email to me as amended by the town clerk Lynn Sibley's additional language in further email that same day, March 9, 2021, all related to our adoption of regulations on public hearing advertising costs. Want to verbalize it?
Bob did second.
Bob seconded.
Okay, I didn't hear it. Okay. Very good. All right. So we've done something.
Do we need to vote?
And on Zoom meetings, you have to vote by roll call.
Okay, so I vote in favor.
I vote in favor.
I vote in favor.
I vote in favor.
All right, it's unanimous.
It's anonymous.
I'm just gonna shut my door. My dogs don't bark in the ZBA.
Roger, I have a question. Can can you start a meeting that hasn't been properly posted? Or do we simply have to postpone any discussion?
So. Do you have town council's email in front of you? Because I don't have it exactly in front of me. If I could get it.
I can get it if.
Yeah, I can share. Anybody can. We can share it.
I know Mary said to open it and then immediately postpone it, but I'm not sure he used those words.
I'm I can read it.
Yeah.
Your email says hello, Town Council got back to me and he does confirm that we must postpone. And then I can read the town council's email, just getting to this now. I think the issue is the absence of posting of the meeting 48 hours in advance, per the open meeting law and the 14 days per chapter 40A, section 11. If the posting does not meet those requirements, the board will not be able to proceed as scheduled. That was underlined.
Yeah, I underline that just for our benefit.
Okay.
Not be able to proceed as scheduled. So that doesn't 100% answer the question, Bob?
I know. Doesn't doesn't seem to answer the question. Because I guess it's my good fortune to follow you because you've got to do it first. And then I get to do it at seven o'clock and copy whatever it is that you do. But I just wondered if we haven't properly posted, because once we, well, no, beginning the meeting, we have what 45 days to actually begin the meeting from the day an application was sent, correct? And then 90 days after we conclude the meeting.
I just looked at that and I have it very handy. So that it says here. This is from section nine of the general laws, 40A, section nine. Special permanent granting authority shall hold a public hearing for which notice has been given per section 11 on any application for a special permit within 65 days from the date of filing. And the decision shall be made within 90 days following the date of the public hearing. So it's 65, 45.
But the the language there seems to indicate that proper posting was necessary.
Does say per section 11.
Yeah. Now, there are people waiting in the waiting room to come in.
All right, we should we should decide what we're doing. So, hi Fred, how you doing? I mean, I don't see how we can't. At least open it. To announce something about it, because otherwise, if we're not.
Right.
Even here to talk about it. It's not opened. But we can't do anything. Effective that that actually addresses it in any way other than say we can't address it. And. Well, here's another thing.
I also wonder, Roger, I don't I don't think we can do much more than say that because there is the possibility that people don't know that it's happening because of the lack of the posting.
Right.
So others just open it.
Right.
Explain the situation.
Presumably, once a proper posting occurs, people could check the website and see what the see what the new date is, which relates to the my next question. Should we just kick it out a month or should we try to do it on a shorter schedule? But we have to leave ourselves enough time to get to 14 days and get the newspaper. Does she have to publish again? Yeah, I guess she's gonna have to publish again.
Yeah.
That's. 14 days from today is the 15. I don't know.
If we don't have to publish again in the newspaper. Yeah, I think that's the benefit of opening it, then. You've at least. Given a chance for anybody who saw the newspaper ad to be here. So the question is whether it's a month or three weeks or. Two weeks be kind of tight. So I think it's just three weeks or should we do it for three weeks or four weeks?
This would be the 22nd of April, correct? If we were.
Yeah. Yeah, that might make people feel a little bit better.
I mean, that that is. Because the next one would be May 6th. So that's that would be good, I think, if that's doable.
So let's do it to the 22nd.
Okay.
It's the best we can do.
Okay, do you want me to let these people in?
Open up the floodgates.
Hello.
Hello.
It's Todd Salora from Sovereign Builders.
Megan, last. Megan, we keep meeting on Zoom.
I know, right? I was gonna say the way of 2020, but now the way of 2021 as well.
Todd, you have any representative here? It's Roger Lipton. How you doing? You have any representative besides yourself?
I don't actually. And I was I was under the impression that we needed to attend or someone needed to attend to because it was going to be continued because it wasn't properly advertised or something. There was a mistake in the advertising.
Yeah, so I'll address that in a minute. We don't have our board secretary. Online yet. I don't see Mary anywhere.
No, okay, because I tried to actually log in another way and it didn't work. So I said, and I dialed in. So it's it's a little different than usual, but.
Yeah.
Here I am.
The phone is fine. The phone is fine. So let's let's give our secretary a couple of minutes to join us and then we'll. We'll proceed. Okay.
Sounds good.
I wonder, Kristen, can we enable transcription just in case she doesn't?
I just got an email from her at 6:41.
Oh, okay.
That is about the minutes. But.
Oh, yes, yes. I wonder if she is not. Yeah, I we I think we all have that email. I'm just looking on my phone.
I don't see transcription on here, just video.
Yeah, usually if we're recording, it should automatically generate. At least. I think it should automatically generate a transcript, at least. Way that my system allows it, but I don't know if it's the same kind of an account. So we will have well, we'll have a video transcription and we might have a written one.
Well, does Mary indicate she's gonna join us or is it just it's just an email about minutes?
An email with the with the minutes.
Yeah, just the minutes. It doesn't sound like.
She certainly knows about tonight.
She does.
Yeah.
Fred, did you sign the Hahnem document?
Yes, we did.
Okay, the I left it. I left it with Lynn Sibley for you to sign.
Yes, I did yesterday.
Okay, so Roger, that one's all complete.
That's great. Okay, yeah, we'll talk about the Pekarski one in a minute. All right. Well, I don't want to hold anybody up. So Todd and I know each other in a number of different contexts going back a long time. You still there, Todd?
Yeah, I am. Yes, yes.
So our board extends our apologies, whether it's the pandemic or or too much going on. In any event, the the mistake that occurred was even though we did advertise properly in the recorder and we posted the agenda on time. Mary did not post the legal notice 14 days before the hearing, only two days before the hearing. When I heard about it, I consulted with town council. And.
Here's Mary. Here's Mary. Sorry about that. I am here now.
Hi, Mary. Okay, so I just was telling the petitioner that I consulted with town council and he said that we cannot hold the public hearing if the town website did not have the legal notice posted 14 days before the hearing, which is a fact we did not. So our apologies, I told the board, though, and rather than make you wait a full month, we can meet again on April 22nd, if that's an available date for you.
Oh, absolutely, and and much appreciated that you're making that exception. That's really very helpful.
Okay, that's great. So then, Mary, from your perspective. Is it true? We don't have to publish in the newspaper again?
No, as long as long as we've opened it now and there's been an agreement on a dead a certain date to continue it to.
Okay.
We don't need to publish anything anymore, just an agenda for that meeting.
All right, so you'll publish an agenda for that meeting and that and the legal notice is already up.
So those, yeah, been posted.
Yes.
The mailings to the butters went out.
But that so that legal notice that's posted will be 14 days before April 22nd, obviously, because it's already posted. So then that's that takes care of that. So we will do it at 6:40 PM, the same time that this one was supposed to start. And. Any questions?
None for me.
Okay, Mary, we addressed everything that you can think of.
Roger, if we officially open the meeting, do we have to read the legal notice?
I was just reaching for that.
Oh, she was just reaching for it. Why do you read the legal notice then?
Let's see. Okay, this appeared in the Greenfield Recorder on March 18th and 25th, 5th, 6th. Legal notice, zoning board of appeals, town of Whately. Notices hereby given that the zoning board of appeals of Whately will hold a public hearing on Thursday, April 1st, 2021, at 6:40 PM. The hearing will take place virtually via Zoom. The rules of decorum for a public hearing remain in effect and the chairperson will seek comments from the public when appropriate to do so. Todd Salora of Sovereign Buildings Incorporated has applied for two special permits. The first is to build a self-storage facility encompassing three buildings totaling 28,600 square feet on property owned by Sharon Holick and located in the commercial zone at State Road Map 5, parcel 29. The second is to allow a sign not to exceed nine square feet in area or 10 feet in height to be located outside the property line and within the right of way. Application for the special permits is to be considered under the provisions of the Whately zoning bylaws as provided by Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 40A. This notice is also published electronically on www-recorder.com-public-notices and www.masspublicnotices.org. And there follows the access information for the computer link and the toll-free telephone numbers for joining tonight's hearing. And it's signed Roger P. Lipton, Chair, Zoning Board of Appeals, March 18th and 25th, 2021.
Okay, very good. Todd, does that sound accurate to you?
You know, the so what what I'm not, what is not accurate, I mean, the the footprint is that is that occupies that area, but the total square footage is larger than that.
Ah, okay.
And that's actually was in. So in the submission, it clearly states different than that. And I have to pull it up. But in the full submission, there's a narrative that that explains that the footprint is that, but that the center building is, and I gotta pull it up to read the the language of it because it is accurate. Let me see. So Jessica Allen submitted this. So here we, no, it's not. I mean, I can email it to you. I would assume that you you have it. I hope you do.
I could share it. Is this the special permit from Jessica?
Yeah, the application, special permit application. So.
I'm gonna share it with the group. Todd can't see it because he's not on the computer, but everybody else will be able to.
And I've found it in my records. So I'm looking at it on a computer, but not shared with you all.
Sorry.
So in the narrative, which is page nine. It's in the in the fourth paragraph, the main building is a 62,400 square foot, three-story building with each floor of 20,800 square feet. So there's two outbuildings that says that that includes 600 square foot for an office. The main building will comprise of various sized climate-controlled self-storage units, self-storage units. Two single-story storage buildings are also proposed at 4,600 square feet and 5,400 square feet, respectively. These buildings will not be climate-controlled and have ground floor access. So that's in the in the in the narrative.
Yes, I see it. So. Thanks for pointing that out to us and we will. Consider all that when we reconvene and.
Other than that.
Yeah.
You know, I don't. That's the only thing that.
Okay. Well, good. Thanks for pointing that out. So as I said, unless there's anything else, we'll see you on April 22nd at 6:40.
Sounds great. Thank you all. Have a great night.
Take care.
Thank you.
Bye bye.
Okay. So while we have five minutes before seven o'clock on the Pekarski application, I did finish that this evening. So.
Before you move on, real quick. So are we commenting on the that property with Todd today or are we waiting till the 22nd?
We wait until the 22nd.
Okay.
Is there any way we can get a copy of the permit? Because the information we were sent was 28,000 square feet. So it seems like it's much, much larger.
Yeah. Website, right? Kristen, wasn't that on the website?
No, that was an email that Mary had sent to me with all of the documents. Okay, but it's usually on the website. It's Mary.
On the on the website, there are drawings. Which give square footage on the Whately.org website under ZBA Agenda for tonight. There's. Building elevations and floor plans and the special permit application package from it's a PDF. Okay.
I think that I think that's what you want to look for the narrative in that.
Okay, okay, great. We will do that and see you on the 22nd then.
What I what I took this from was the page of the actual two-page paper application. And what it said there was they were applying for a special permit to build self-storage facility encompassing three buildings totaling 28,600 square feet. So that's what I used. That that's the only description there, but the further description is, as you saw in the narrative. Normally, what's on the page that they submit is reliable. In this case, there's a discrepancy.
Yeah, like I said, that's just not what we were expecting when we came to show it up today.
Well, I'm glad glad you know about it now. Now you have a chance to think about it.
Great, thank you.
Okay, good luck.
On the 13th, Megan.
What was that about the 13th?
Megan is a library trustee. We're both library trustees. We have a trustee meeting.
Okay, I didn't have 13 written down anywhere.
No, no, sorry. I should have been doing it on it as a sidebar.
So April 22nd at 6:40, we'll open this again.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, what I want to say about the Pekarski decision, I wrote that.
But I just want to mention that right before I got on, I emailed partial minutes of last March's meeting. Just in case people wanted to look at them in their emails or something while we were talking, the Pekarski, I completed the whole minutes about that. Hannah Select, I started, but I jumped ahead to the parts involving the decision. I'll have to finish the rest of the there was a lot of discussion.
So that may be exactly what I need, the decision.
That's why I did that.
Good.
And the other one, the Hahnem, that's complete.
Yeah, that's been filed with the town. All right. So we're good on that. So on Pekarski, I did complete the decision. I emailed it just at like 6:20. I expect anybody to have read it to to Kristen and to Fred, who are the decision makers as I am on that one. Now. I'm proposing that you, Kristen, be the temporary clerk, because the clerk has to sign. So we didn't really make a designation. Is that okay with you?
Sure.
Okay, so then when you see it. Obviously, if something's wrong, let me know. But if it's all good, you would sign Kristen as clerk on page one. And page. It's called page three, but it's really page four of the submission because the opening page doesn't have a number. And then. At the top of that last page, you'll see below where I put my reasons, you put your reasons and you need to get it over to Fred so that he can then sign it and get it over to. To Lynn.
Could I just say that what they're doing now, the town offices have limited opening, is that you can bring the decision to town office and you can go to town office and sign it. If you just talk to either Amy or the town clerk. Which is what I did with with Fred on the Hahnem decision. And that's how I guess the planning board is doing theirs. And other committees in town are bringing whatever has to be signed to a central location and then signing. But if it works for.
Well, that's. Are you still there, Fred?
Yes, yeah, we're doing that with select board and and I guess you don't have to, you can go anytime, anytime somebody is in a building, even if the doors are locked. I guess knock on the doors or the window and or even call if you're there and nobody and they'll let you in. So you're not limited to the three, three mornings that we're open.
Okay, so Kristen, it sounds like probably easiest if you could just do your piece of it and get it over to the town hall and then, I mean, town offices and then Fred will catch up with it.
Yep.
Yes.
I just signed it and printed it, so I will bring it over there hopefully tomorrow.
Good. Okay, great.
And it'll be available.
Hey.
There tomorrow, Friday's only till noon time. Kristen, so.
I'm sorry.
I think this. On Fridays, the office, nobody is there only until or people are there only until noon time on Friday.
Is it just you that needs to sign it, Fred?
Well.
I can bring it to you.
Sure, if you want.
Why don't I just bring it to you if you're the only one and then and then we'll mail it to Roger or?
Well, so here's the thing, that page. That I normally sign as I was reading it is a page where. There's been an approval. But again, as I read it, if there's been a denial, I don't need to sign that page because it's not going to the registry of deeds. Denials don't go to the registry of deeds. So that makes it easier. I don't actually have to sign it, Kristen. I just I handwrote in my reasoning on the last page.
Right.
Really a signature. So I think I'm out of the loop as far as. Putting on paper.
No, I guess bring it bring it to town offices, Kristen, because.
Okay.
I mean, in and out, I can't say I'm gonna wait here all day for you to bring it. So at least.
I'll bring it to the town offices and just leave it there for you, Fred.
Right.
Roger, who else needs to sign this?
You're the one.
I you want me to sign it as the clerk, though?
Yes.
And so doesn't it need three members or just two?
Well, three members vote. So that last page.
Right.
Has the indication of each of our votes at the top. And I already put that in, but that's not a signature. It's just a we've always done it as just.
All right. So I so I'm gonna vote as a member also.
You're voting as a member and you sign twice.
And then Fred, that's the three. Okay, we'll do that. I'll leave it at the town offices.
Okay.
Okay.
Cool. And then Mary, while you were. Still waiting to join us or not join us, we were very efficient. We voted to adopt the publication. Portion of the agenda that you had put on.
To it.
The applicants pay for the public hearing.
Oh, they, yeah, the advertising charges for legal notices. Okay. Let me just turn a page here. What exactly? Did you vote for language? We have to update the forms. So if I'm doing it, I need to know exactly what to put on it.
So the easiest thing for me to do is I will. Oh, well, actually, you were on that email. If you go back to your November, excuse me, November, March 9th. Email between myself, Lynn and Brian.
I'm just trying to. When I. When I have Zoom up, I have trouble looking at other things.
I don't even try to do it. Yeah, I just stay on the Zoom. I'm afraid I'm.
Yeah, well, okay, maybe I think I'm doing it here. Now, what was it? March, what date?
March 9th.
March 9th. It'll take a bit here to get back to the right page. March 9th. Okay, here's some March 9th. Okay, is this the one that starts? I agree with Lynn's.
Yes.
Okay, let me open that with Lynn's suggestion. And. And
Well, actually, Brian says perfect. Let's do both.
Okay, yes. And then that was to the suggestion of I agree that the application and the zoning, the ZBA regs should be updated to reflect this change.
Yeah.
Cost will vary by application, but we could state something like the advertising cost will vary by application and will be provided to the applicant once the legal ad is submitted to the newspaper and the newspaper provides the quote. The applicant will be informed of that cost and the payment can be made payable to the town of Waitley.
Yeah, so we adopted that.
So that will go in. And I also, I don't think our application has a requirement for an email for the applicant and it would be much better to notify them about this by email rather than phoning.
I would say put that in there if you can get an app.
Yes, I, well, our, this is probably a bit much work in without going on to another piece of paper. But I could always shorten the list of the butters to maybe put it.
That's only part of it because the main thing we adopted was Brian's opening salvo, if you will, in the email, which is at the very bottom. Where he's got the bulk, cost of advertising public hearings. So that's about seven or eight lines right there.
Wait a minute, I gotta get, this is way down the bottom.
Yeah.
The please consider this a formal request.
Yes.
Take steps. So you want to put in start, you want me to put on the you want me to put an explanation for why we're doing this? No, well, what? You said it's
I would use bold print as a heading, cost of advertising public hearings.
Oh, oh, I see that. Sorry.
I would put that and then I below that I would put as a separate paragraph Lynn's two sentences, sentences that she added on.
And that's what I was just reading?
Yeah.
Those were Lynn's. Okay, first, first Brian's. One, Brian's. Two, Lynn's. And also put a spot in for applicant email.
Yeah.
Okay. I'm not, I don't even think I have something that I can work on. You know, an electronic form that I can alter, but I'll do whatever, you know, maybe when
Go, Don Sluter had one. It almost seemed, if you guys remember, we almost went to electronic, but then
We did.
We never quite fully crossed the threshold and then we fell back, fell back to paper.
We need to, we need to re redo that.
Well, maybe I can check with Lynn and see if she now has anything
Yeah.
about it because normally you would have to send it to her to get her to to okay it and put it on the on the on the town website. I'll check the town website. I don't know. I'll find out what I can do about that. But we've got three things then. Brian's statement, Lynn's additional statement and applicant email.
Yeah.
However, it best fits.
Okay, cool.
Okay, now we we have had, someone has filed an application for next month. So it seems like we're going to be going back to I don't know, three, three hearings in one night.
Well, maybe yes, maybe no. So
Let me just
The applicant on that.
I'm just looking for this. It's somebody else who wants a variance to do something that involves setbacks from yards. But his thing sounds like something I've heard you grant before. Oh, wait a minute. Is that the Weber Road thing? I think I sent that to you, Rob, and around, yeah, okay, 38 Weber robe, a screen porch on the south side of the house, but the front setback is
Oh, no, but I sent I sent him over to the building inspector.
Oh, okay.
Because he may very well get the building inspector to agree. He had a good analysis, but in which case we don't have to do anything. So
Okay, well, we'll forget about that for now.
Forget about that. Yeah.
Yeah.
So is anybody waiting, Kristen?
Nobody else is waiting. Everybody's in the meeting.
Dr. Herbert's here to begin the second.
Okay. So we really don't have anything else on the agenda at this point except for Dr. Herbert, right? You've covered the other things. Okay.
Yeah. All right. So I'm going to stay on board just to listen. I'm not going to participate. And I'll let you guys take it, take it from there.
Okay. Good evening, Dr. Herbert. How are you tonight?
Well, yes, I'm good.
Well, I'm afraid that we have bad news, which you already have been alerted to, and that is that we failed to properly post the meeting in all of the places that needed to be posted. And according to law, we needed to do it 14 days before the meeting. And that did not occur, which means that we cannot proceed with your hearing tonight. But what we would, what we intend to do is invite you to a meeting on April 22nd. Rather than wait till May 6th, we'll move it till April 22nd. And we'll look for, well, we'll say 7:00 PM, but I don't know if that's a I just don't want to say 7:30 and then have to wait for 20 minutes if that's okay with you. We need to read the legal notice tonight and then we're going to immediately postpone until the 22nd if that if that date works for you.
What day of the week is that?
It's a Thursday also.
Okay.
Okay, so Mary, could you read the legal notice for the Urban Grown?
Yes. This ran in the Greenfield Recorder on March 18th and 25th. Legal Notice, Zoning Board of Appeals, Town of Waitley. Notice is hereby given that the zoning board of appeals of Waitley will hold a public hearing on Thursday, April 1st, 2021, at 7:00 PM. The hearing will take place virtually via Zoom. The rules of decorum for a public hearing remain in effect and the chairperson will seek comments from the public when appropriate to do so. Stephen Herbert of Urban Grown Inc. has applied for a special permit to cultivate marijuana on premises zoned commercial owned by Rizard Brenda Christine Jordan and Weishen and I of Deerfield and located at State Road, Map 326. Also requested is a waiver as described in Waitley Bylaws Section 171-28.6 C5 to allow reduction of the required 500-foot setback from a recreation area, Treetown Beach, to 300 feet. Application of the special permit is to be considered under the provisions of the Waitley zoning bylaws as provided by Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 40A. This notice is also published electronically on www-recorder.com-public-notices and www.masspublicnotices.org. And then there follows the access information for joining this meeting by computer or toll-free telephone. And it's signed Roger P. Lipton Chair, Zoning Board of Appeals, March 18th and 25th, 2021, as the advertising dates.
Herbert, was that accurately written and read?
Yes, that's accurate to what we want. And so there is absolutely no discussion of anything tonight.
Correct. We we can't legally do that. We have to wait until April 22nd when all of the publications have occurred properly.
Yeah.
Okay, so as as acting chair, I would invite you back on on April 22nd at 7:00 PM.
Yep, we'll be here.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your understanding.
Yeah, we're a little disappointed, but that's okay.
Okay. Very good. Do we have anything else, Roger?
I think we covered a lot in a short period of time. So no, nothing else.
Well, good night, everyone.
Night, everyone.
See you on the 22nd.
Night. Thanks a lot.